For the record, my name is Enrique Pepin. All right, thank you so much for joining us. We're going to do again introductions, your titles, and opening statements. So we're starting off, we can start off with Director Johnson.
Sorry, give me one second. Actually prepared a statement for all of our panelists today in the interest of time. Good afternoon, my name is Danielle Johnson. I'm the Director for the Office of Housing Stability here within the Mayor's Office of Housing. First, I want to acknowledge and thank my colleagues from the Boston Fire Department, the Office of Emergency Management, ONS, and all of our community partners who just testified. Responding to fires and other emergencies is never the work of just one department. It's a collective effort that starts the moment a fire happens and continues for weeks and months afterwards. When a fire occurs, our coordinated response begins immediately. The Boston Fire Department ensures safety on scene and provides vital information through their Victim Assistance Unit. The Office of Emergency Management and the American Red Cross help address immediate needs like clothing, food, or shelter. The Office of Neighborhood Services works directly with impacted residents and neighborhoods, making sure information is shared and needs are elevated quickly. And the Office of Housing Stability steps in to assess household needs, help people understand their rights and insurance options, and connect them to temporary shelter or hotels when there's nowhere else to go. But our work doesn't stop there. We stay connected to displaced households through Housing Search, which you heard from NOAA earlier today, referrals to various city resources and financial assistance, helping cover costs like first month's rent, last month's rent, and security deposits. Also, broker's fees, which are going to be no longer starting August 1st, but we do this so families can move forward. Throughout this process, we coordinate closely with ISD to understand whether units are safe to reoccupy and with the Boston Home Center when homeowners need support for repairs. All of this happens while balancing limited resources and responding to each situation's unique needs, from overnight outreach to longer-term support. Together, our goal is to make sure no one is left without options after experiencing a life-changing emergency like a fire. We appreciate the council's continued focus on this work, your partnership in strengthening our response, and your support in helping us serve residents as quickly and effectively as possible. Thank you, and we look forward to your questions.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner, Councilor Coletta and Pepin. I appreciate this opportunity to talk about the Boston Fire Department. The mission of the Boston Fire Department Victim Assistance Unit is to provide a quality unit within the Boston Fire Department with the capability to provide immediate on-scene assistance for persons displaced from their residence as a result of fire or other type of emergency. The Victim Assistance Unit exists to support displaced persons by ensuring scene safety during the incident, ensure access to emergency medical care if necessary, and assist salvaging essential belongings such as medicine and legal documents from a potentially hazardous environment. Additionally, the Victim Assistance Unit is the initial liaison between the displaced parties and the multiple partner agencies that provide assistance and relief after the fire or emergency is under control. Upon arrival on the scene, the Victim Assistance Unit will immediately consult with the incident commander to determine the number and disposition of displaced victims. In the early stages of an incident, the Victim Assistance Unit ensures the victims are provided a safe area away from the hazardous environment while the incident is brought under control. They also provide for immediate sheltering from elements through the use of a bus or appropriate local facility until the Office of Neighborhood Services arrives and can provide necessary shelter to assist the displaced. Coordination with the incident commander to allow for safe and orderly access to the building for those displaced to recover their essential belongings when salvageable and when building conditions permit. They also coordinate with Boston EMS on immediate medical needs of the displaced residents, and they coordinate with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, the Office of Emergency Management and Red Cross, and Building Management to determine emergency sheltering options. They also provide ONS, OEM, Red Cross, and other applicable agencies with a list of displaced residents to include name, age, school if applicable, and contact information. They also coordinate with the incident commander and the Red Cross personnel to conduct damage assessments and coordinate with other agencies as needed by the incident commander to provide logistical support for emergency operations. All Victim Assistance Unit response shall be documented and forwarded to the appropriate personnel and the agencies in a timely manner. As needed, the Boston Fire Victim Assistance Unit will be available to follow up with any of the partner agencies to ensure all information and details pertaining to the displaced bodies. Just one fact that we go, the Victim Assistance Unit goes on the second alarm in high, so they would not go normally if just a one alarm fire. So that's when they go out when the fire gets severe and people are going to be displaced. So thank you for having us here today, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Chief Jordan.
Good afternoon. Councilor and community members, thank you for this opportunity to speak today. As the Chief of Emergency Preparedness, I'd like to emphasize how critical it is that our response to residential fires extends beyond the initial emergency. A fire just doesn't destroy property, it displaces families, disrupts lives, and often exposes deep inequities. Too often, residents are left with little or no support in the days that follow. Many are renters, seniors, or families without insurance, forced to navigate loss without resources. I think the fundamental issue is, for me, is, and based on my year in this position, is the reliance on city services is, has now overwhelmed our city services. And I think that there should be a fundamental shift in the way we do business. I think that we need to encourage residents to kind of support themselves as best they can. The fire fund idea, while I support it, the exploration should be integrated into a broader more equitable recovery strategy. And I'm looking forward to any questions here because I think that's, we should have some really spirited conversation, debate around this issue. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Director Santana.
Thank you, Councilor, Lindsey Santana, Director of Neighborhood Services. So we work with our colleagues when it comes to fire response. Neighborhood liaisons connect with impacted residents on-site, collecting initial household information, which is names, contact details, and immediate needs. And we provide basic resource information, updates to 311 and Office of Housing Stability. We serve as a communication bridge between residents and city hall departments to ensure that they're getting the resources that we can provide. And we may remain engaged for neighborhood follow-ups or community meetings that come from fire displacements. I know that we're here also to discuss the fund itself. And just for context, last year, we did do some research to see what it would take to do the fund to assist residents. However, because of the anti-aid amendment from the Massachusetts state law, it prohibits us from using operating dollars to actually set up a fund. It would have to come from external partners or like philanthropy and stuff like that. So I'm pretty sure that, you know, based on this conversation of funding, that's something that will come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilor Coletta, about that, the floor is yours for a first round of questions.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you so much for your patience and being here. I know that this has gone on a little bit long, but I think it is a worthwhile discussion and certainly something that I am interested in pushing forward. And I've gotten a chance to work with each and every one of you in the moments after a fire and the days and weeks. And so just thank you for your professionalism and everything that you and your teams do. For ONS and Director Santana, or Deputy Director, what's your title? Director, sorry, I didn't mean to.
It's okay.
Director Santana. So ONS is really like the point person, the lead person in the moments after a fire. And that includes communication and follow-up and all of that, working with various city departments. And my office takes that seriously whenever there is a fire that happens in East Boston. Typically, it is, when we get fires, and this is not the case for every single fire, but when there is a devastating fire in EC, it is, you know, upwards of 20 to 30 people being displaced. And so it is a lot to put on one particular person. Somebody had talked about having a central repository of information where, and currently what I'm seeing is that it is the ONS person that is the one in partnership with Housing Stability and NOAA. They are the person that is in direct communication with these folks. They are the central repository of information and resources. Before I get into specific questions about the fund and potential structures and all of that and the research that you've done, has there been any changes around how ONS responds to a fire in the last couple of years that you can talk about? Any operational advances that you've made? And some, more importantly, some opportunities that you see for ONS in responding to fires or emergencies? Thank you.
Yeah, there's definitely been some shifts when it comes to how we respond to fires or just how liaisons go. So when I was a liaison, we were on-call for our neighborhoods 24/7. But something that we did in the past years is making sure that the liaisons are now covering one month out of the week. One week out of the month to make sure that that helps with burnout. So they'll cover a different zone, so it's five to six neighborhoods, and they're on-call for that week 24/7. But the other thing that we've implemented now that we have deputy directors is making sure that there's another level of coverage. So depending on how intense the fire is, if it's two, five alarm, the East Boston one that you're referencing, it escalated to a point where the director also was on-scene. So the liaison, the deputy director, and the director itself, to make sure that we're supporting based on the numbers that are actually there. But if it's a smaller fire where we feel like it's more manageable, the liaison will go on-scene. But if they need support, the deputy is also available, well, that's phone calls to help kind of navigate that. So operationally, that's something that's been different that we're doing. Another thing that we have also implemented is like rideshare service. So before, it was kind of up to the liaison to figure out how to get there, but making sure that we're giving the resources for the liaisons to feel supported. There is that rideshare component. So just making sure there is more, I would say, support within our office when it comes to fires and if there's more knowledge or like how do we figure that out. But in terms of opportunity, I think there's always room for growth, right? But I'm curious, and if you guys have any ideas, I'm happy to talk those through too.
And thank you for that. And it does seem like based on each individual fire, it is obvious that it would, you know, there are certain nuances and differing factors in every single fire. You see it citywide, I only see it in East Boston. How does, or I guess if you can explain like a successful model of what true support looks like? Like what individual communities or neighborhoods have done to really be there for residents? And because your folks are doing the follow-up to these individuals afterwards, where they've, you know, they're maybe still trying to find housing, or they need food, or they need assistance with finding furniture, how could a fire fund ultimately help them? Where community or neighborhoods couldn't meet that need in the way that maybe East Boston does? And I am biased, I think East Boston does a great job. But if you have any other successful models, I would be curious to hear about them.
I can't necessarily say I know a successful model. I would have to agree with you. East Boston is a very different experience. When I am looking at the fires that we cover across the city, I see that there's a different level of support, or like neighbors really come together. Like you come to fires, I've seen Ramon Daro at fires. Like I think it's just a different experience depending on the neighborhood. But I think a fund itself, again, we can't necessarily use operating dollars, but one thing that I've seen that EC does is just like be able to pull that money together to figure out what the family needs and support each other. So like, it's always something that I tell like Roberto or like other liaisons. It's just like it's a different experience depending on what the neighborhood itself and how it organizes. It just feels like East Boston's a bit more organized when it comes to stuff like that.
Thank you. And zeroing in on the fund a little bit, I was looking at various legal frameworks of funds across the city. And this is maybe for everybody, not just for Lindsey. But the San Francisco Fire Victim Assistance Fund, it seems like it would probably be the most applicable here in Boston, where it was created by ordinance. And because we are limited by state law, where we're not allowed to use operational funds, I think that this model would make sense where they're able to receive appropriated funds. I'm curious to know if that's, if they're allowed to receive operational funds or maybe even capital or whatever it is. But certainly private donations aimed at assisting individuals displaced by residential fires. And there's certain eligibility criteria, and maybe this is where OHS comes into play, where there are, they are able to provide like rental assistance to those who are displaced by a fire or by any emergency, this could be where OEM comes in, who earn up to 100% of the area median income. Now, 100% is kind of high, I had heard 80%, I've heard 50%. And the benefit duration is up to 24 months for eligible recipients. That could be amended. If your income is below 70% of the AMI, the displaced person, and the displaced person has not returned home or remains without permanent housing, that duration goes up to 48 months. And so I think that there's, you know, there's certainly something to look at here. Curious to know if folks have initial reactions to that, if that's something that you've also looked into. I don't want us to be limited by what state law has on the books, right? We can get creative, we can think outside the box. And there is a model here anyway in the city of Boston where there was a strategic partnership fund. I forget exactly what it was called, but it was during COVID, where we could receive outside donations from partners. And so I do think that this is a model that we can look to. And if anybody has any reactions to that, now is the time to talk through what you think is good about this particular fund. Granted, you don't have it in front of you, and we can talk more about it. But any immediate red flags that you think that we should be working through as we review this type of fund.
I've had conversations with the emergency manager from San Francisco. And while the fund works well, the intricacies are how that fund gets distributed and who makes the criteria. And even though the criteria is clearly spelled out, the issue is, is who then further... The issue is, is the, like, who determines then is proof of, has it been 12 months? Has it been 24 months? Have you been doing X, Y, Z? So then the intricacies of the program then become probably the hard part of the program. The initializing of the program worked well, she said, but then, obviously, then the intricacies of who gets it, how, proof, then those, that was a lot of the great area, and that became, it's still a headache to this point. So she warned that while the program read well, the day-to-day operation of the program and facilitating the intricacies of the program were very, very, are still very, very hard. She said, just bear in mind that these programs, there are a lot of pieces to it. It gets tedious at times, so just bear in mind that if you were to do something like that, just make sure it's well-vetted and that. And then my thought process, and then the question to you was like, who would then facilitate this program? If we implemented a program like that, then who runs it, who takes it? Like what body within the city does it? So that would be my thought, my process, my question to you guys, like, who would facilitate this program?
And it is a great, it is a great question. We would have to create some sort of board. I think we heard from Lincoln, and granted, Lincoln in Boston, not apples to apples, apples to oranges for sure, but some things to review. They had talked about a board that you could set up that we would have to create. I'm pretty sure that San Francisco has a board, or I could be wrong about that. I'll double-check and get the correct structure on the record. But in terms of, you know, trying to make it as easy as possible, because ultimately, this is money that needs to get into the pockets of folks quickly. And the great thing about the structure that we have created in East Boston, in partnership with the East Boston Social Center as that fiscal sponsor, is that the only eligibility that you really need is unfortunately to be the victim of this emergency. And so the benefit of that, with some issues aside as relates to legal status and privacy, the beauty of that is that you can get it to those folks quickly. And so no matter what, the structure of a fire fund would have to move expeditiously. I did like what Abigail had said from Lincoln about if you receive SNAP benefits or if you're on fuel assistance, and there's already sort of these thresholds that have been met, and you've already demonstrated or provided paperwork to the Commonwealth or the city of Boston, you've received rental assistance, that that automatically qualifies you for something like this. So I think it's just, it would have to be an amalgamation of various programs that are already existing that would fast-track you to get this money from this sort of fund. But I think there's still a lot more that we have to figure out. But this is a part of that process, is just kind of talking through what some of the operational challenges might be.
I'll just add, as someone who runs sort of a emergency fund, I echo Chief Jordan's sentiments in terms of who's going to manage this process. I like the idea of a board having that discretionary authority. But also think about the prioritization. How are we giving funds to one community and making sure that that's equitable? So I think that's also something to take into consideration. We heard from the prior panelists around other resources that are available. So to your point around making sure that things are centralized, making sure that the board or whomever is going to be tasked with operating this fund has those resources readily available so that when someone reaches out, when one of you reach out, we can easily say, we know for certain that this entity or this body has the information needed. But fully support it, but do you think there are some pieces, to your point, Councilor Coletta Zapata, that we need to think about?
Thank you. And maybe we should have somebody from Treasury here, so this could be a follow-up question. But do we know if there's a set reserve that the city already has to receive outside donations? Is that fund that was created under COVID, the COVID Recovery Fund, I think is what it was called, is that still in existence?
I don't, I think that's a Treasury question for sure.
Okay, we could follow up with that through the chair. I'll just submit that for CFO, Groffenberger. But Commissioner Burke, while you are here, and you, your team is on-scene, has there, and talking about the equity component and making sure that we are, if this fund were to exist or be established, that we are distributing the funds equitably. Are there any patterns or hotspots where we see more severe impacts from residential fires? Would it make sense to have even or work through individual neighborhood emergency funds where it is the nonprofits that are doing a lot of the legwork to set it up? And we have residents of that particular neighborhood donating into that fund rather than a citywide model? Just curious to know if there's any hotspots or patterns.
Not that I know of. I think one point we're missing here is everybody owns these buildings, maybe not the tenants that are in them. Our first avenue should be to go to the insurance companies of the owner and say, listen, we're not waiting, we should have some type of enforcement arm that makes them pay. Those landlords should pay for that housing. If these people are displaced, then they own this home, they're off-site landlords, they have insurance. That insurance should pay for housing for the people that are displaced. I think that there should be an enforcement arm, which wouldn't require money per se, but just somebody coming down on the insurance company and the homeowner to provide safe haven for the people that are displaced. I mean, the few exceptions might be public housing, that that would fall on the city. But I think most buildings are owned by somebody, and they have to, even if it's your house that burns, you have insurance. They, it's our duty to police those insurance companies, to be on-site and get these people housing right away. The landlords are, they're accountable, and they should be held accountable for these fires.
Yeah, thank you for that, and you bring up a great point, one that's hidden in my notes here, which is that in some instances, we've had incredible landlords who have said, I will find them housing. They've done it, they've gotten their insurance companies up and running. I've also had landlords that have been on-site and said, I'll be right back. And then they're nowhere to be found, they don't answer their calls. And I think that that was maybe a question to ONS or whoever can answer it, which is what does that enforcement look like when a landlord does not show up? They, they're not there for their tenants? And we are now stuck depending on the minimal amount that Red Cross gives, which I know that it's increased, but it is a small amount, and we're very grateful for it. And then afterwards, what the city provides through Housing Stability and NOAA. But what does that enforcement look like? And citywide, what is, what is the situation? Are landlords being responsive, or is it just a unique East Boston thing where they're nowhere to be found sometimes?
I think our team does the best that they can when we're on-scene, right, to figure things out. With ISD, sometimes that's where we get information of who the landlord or the property manager is. I don't think it's just an East Boston thing, it's like a citywide thing of like, it depends on who the property manager is, the landlord, and like what their resource is. You know, some of them are out of state. But in terms of enforcement, I think legally, there's things that they're required to do and not do. And I think that might be more of a MOH or OHS question. I don't know if Danielle can answer that one.
Yeah. There are a number of things. So first, there's a law that requires landlords to provide homeowners' insurance information to the tenants that are displaced. Failure to do so results in a fine up to $500. I don't know if that's per day or what the timeframe is, but that's the first thing. So the landlord has to give you their, within 15 days, has to give you the homeowner's insurance information. Then there is the reimbursement information, so the $750 out of the homeowner's insurance policy, that's automatic. That too is also mandated by the statute, state law. And that requires up to $750. That can be for whatever the tenant wants to use it for, hotel, moving costs, whatever. We know that the cost of moving, $750, doesn't cover a lot.
Can I just pause you right there?
Yeah, sure.
So just making sure that I'm clear about what you said. So the landlord has to give the information about the insurance within 15 days?
Correct.
Okay, and then when that doesn't happen, or if they don't get the $750, like who is checking in on that from a city perspective? Is that ISD or is that you?
So that is to be determined because it's a state law. It would likely be some state entity that would have to, you'd probably have to file some sort of complaint to say that I didn't get this information from the landlord, I'm entitled to this under Chapter 93A or some other statute within, within the law.
So it would be, have to be on the tenant to take them to small claims court?
Correct.
Okay.
But then there is also the state sanitary code. And there is a provision within the state sanitary code that says, in situations where the unit is uninhabitable or the tenant cannot be in the unit for a certain timeframe, whoever is the person that does inspections, which for the city would be ISD, they'd have to come in and say this unit is uninhabitable. We're going to do some sort of hearing, which ISD does pretty frequently. And then after that, the landlord is required to put the tenant in a temporary space until the repairs are made or pay for their moving costs, et cetera. Whether that happens, few and far between. But it's my understanding that ISD would probably be the entity that would enforce that part related to the state sanitary code.
Okay, I mean, clearly, there's some work that has to be done here legislatively to kind of make this a little bit more airtight, because there are instances in more frequent East Boston, I can't speak to the city, where the landlords really aren't showing up. And that's why it feels like there is no help really coming in from anywhere as it relates to the homeowner's perspective or their obligation. So thank you for clarifying that. I want to be cognizant of my chair.
You have more type of questions?
Why don't I stop there and go to you and then get my thoughts back in order? But I appreciate this first round, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay. To the department, thank you so much for being here. Seriously, just thankful for all the work that you all do, being able to have worked with Neighborhood Services very closely with honestly all three of your departments. In my previous role, just, I know what it's like to just show up to a fire and try to help a family in need. My question, my first question is to Director Johnson, and is similar to the question that I asked NOAA. What type of relationship do you have, does the office have, with different landlords, different development corporations, the CDCs in the city to, is there a list of people that you could reach out to to figure out if there are available units in the city?
Sure, obviously, being the Mayor's Office of Housing, we work with a lot of property owners, a lot of developers. We have great relationships with the CDCs, all of them. Also work with a lot of property management companies, the main ones being sort of your large property beacon, Wynn, Maloney, et cetera. So oftentimes, if fires happen in those communities, which aren't very often unfortunately, we're able to reach out to them, and they usually respond fairly quickly to do what they're... they're supposed to do as it relates to homeowner or landlord responsibility. As it relates to small landlords, we don't have as much of a relationship. What we do try to do is connect, and this is what we do every time a fire happens, is connect with the landlord, also have the landlord talk to our home center so that they can be aware of what their rights are. But as it relates to small landlords, we found that a lot of them don't have the resources or the capital to really put people in hotels for however long it takes to repair things, which is where that falls on the city and sort of where this conversation is going in relation to the fund. But to your sort of overarching question, we have a lot of relationships. And I think Linda maybe had, from the NOAA panel, had raised it earlier, you know, this is a competitive housing market, so people are competing with other people who are trying to move because they can't afford the rent. So there's no really prioritization in terms of you've been in a fire, you've been impacted, let's bump you to the top of this list, which is unfortunate, but that's sort of the reality that we, that we're in currently. So when a fire happens, we try to reach out to larger owners to say, if anything comes up, let us know. Of course, their response is, there's a long waitlist, but we'll see what we can do off, you know, there's off chances where there is opportunity to place households who are impacted, but it really depends on the market and where things stand. So our relationships are strong, we try to utilize those as much as possible, but understand the other piece of it, that there are many citizens, many residents within the city of Boston who are looking for affordable housing as well.
Right. I have a follow-up question to this too. When, let's, when there's a fire and they're all tenants, none of them are like home, they're not the landlords, do they have any protection or any sort of something? Is there something in place that they say, once it's redone, they can go back? And the reason why I bring this up is, there was a fire in Rosendale before I got into the office, but it was a triple-decker and it got redone and none of the families that got pushed out were back into that triple-decker. So I was like, what, like, why, why weren't they the ones to get the first dibs at those units?
Yeah, a lot of times, some households may say, this is going to take too long, so I'm going to look for other housing, and they move into other housing. Other people can't have that privilege, so they have to wait. And in those instances, sometimes landlords don't do what they're supposed to do, which is offer the unit back to the person that was displaced. Obviously, if there are other issues involved, such as they were, they were in eviction proceedings, despite that, you still have to continue with that, with that legal issue. And if the landlord doesn't want to rent to them anymore, again, they'd still have to go through the legal process. So to your point, it's a matter of educating landlords as well to say, yes, this has happened to your unit, to your building, but the tenants do have a right to return, and that's baked into the law as well. So making sure that landlords understand that as well. But most of the time, the repairs take six to 12 months, and people can't wait that long to move back into the unit.
Okay, thank you for that. So there, so there is some sort of protection there?
Correct.
Okay, depends. Okay, my follow-up question, my next question is for Neighborhood Services. And in previous panel, we heard about the East Boston, the East Boston Social Center. Do you guys keep track of organizations like those in other neighborhoods? I feel like building those relationships with other organizations, if they exist in other neighborhoods, would be beneficial.
I don't think we have a tracker or like we track it in that way. If the liaison has developed a relationship, obviously, we encourage them to develop a relationship with any organization within their neighborhoods. Like, that's something that we do foster, but it's not like we're keeping track of it necessarily.
Just thinking, thinking through this, like, maybe, I think that's why a centralized system would make a lot of sense, where not just the city departments are involved, but also a neighborhood organization that is very much focused on these type of funds would be, would be good. Just, I'm already thinking about like what other groups we can bring into the conversation.
Counselor, if I may?
Yes.
So we're, we're in the process of forming what's called a disaster, disaster support network. We've got, we got funding through one of our grants. So my regional catastrophic grant preparedness team is building out a disaster resource network where we get information from, we go to communities and we solicit information about organizations that are willing to provide resources, whether it be shelter, for short-term shelter, space for people to come in out of the elements. So we're building out a disaster network that we can then distribute to the other folks on the panel, so they have the information that we compile. So when they go to a neighborhood, they would be, it'll be a list of resources, like this organization says, hey, we can, we can house here for, for two days or one day, or we can feed here. So that's what my office is working on. So to your point, that's already in the works.
That's, that's very key. And I think that's kind of, that is what I was thinking about. We're having that type of, that information in hand is very valuable, not just for fire displacements, but just for any type of disaster. So thank you for working on that, appreciate that. I'm excited to see that when it's done. Not necessarily a question, but working with the Treasury Department before and knowing, there are grants that, there are funds that exist that the city can give to residents, like the ones that I'm thinking about is, it's a very unfortunate one. If there's a victim of a homicide and the city does provide money or relief to the cost of a funeral, et cetera. So there's mechanisms to do it, we just have to figure out what the right way is. So I think we should have a follow-up conversation with the Treasury Department to figure out what's the right way to do it. So yeah. That's really it for me. Okay, I'm going to pass it over to my counsel colleague.
Thank you. A follow-up question for Danielle, and then we'll go back to Chief Jordan. What is the average amount of money provided directly to community organizations from the city, like NOAA and others, for emergency housing assistance? And broadly, what is your current budget for that this fiscal year?
Sure, thank you for that question. So the average depends on the service that's being provided. So for NOAA, for instance, their budget last year was 1.8, but that was because it was amended. We usually start the budget lower than expected. In the event that we have emergencies or fires, we sort of create a buffer for ourselves. So for NOAA in particular, they're funded by CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, which are federal dollars, but also funded with Housing 2030, which is city funds. And we sort of distribute the funds evenly between like their own call staff, the case management support. They also have case managers that do our tenant stabilization fund work, and then they have our emergency housing assistance work. And then they have a hotel line item as well. And that's what we start off lower, on the lower end. I have to get the exact figure from our housing development officer, but it was between $500 and $600,000 for the year. We went well over that, just understanding the impacts of fires and understanding that even though the stay at minimum is 30 days, realizing that if you don't have a voucher, if you're a mixed household with EA changing quite frequently, that can cause your hotel stay to be extended. So it was about $500,000 to $600,000 for just their hotel line item budget. And then I believe this year, we've spent about, and this is probably through May, almost a million dollars just on hotel assistance.
Million dollars, okay. And that's city funds, that's not CDBG or anything?
That I'll have to confirm. It could be a combination because CDBG comes with different AMI guidelines. So that's why when Linda was saying it depends on your income, who's in the household, we have to make that assessment. So I can get that exact figure for you.
That would be great. And of course, my, my thought is like, all right, well, what is the cost savings that we could potentially give the city if we're able to crowdsource? Obviously, it's not going to cover all of that, but it would be able to allow the city to redirect these funds in a different way if it's, if it's covered by, by outside sources. Chief, you had mentioned that you, you've already talked to San Francisco, you've like, this is, this is your, this is your work, you do this day in and day out. What sort of conversations have you had that you think would be beneficial or productive to know about in this conversation? And are there any models that you have seen that have been successful that you're interested in pursuing for the city of Boston?
Well, initially, we talked to Cambridge because when I, when I got appointed a year ago, my first conversation from hearing about the fund was, we heard that Cambridge had a sustainable fund. And then we talked to Cambridge, and then nobody talks about the intricacies of the program, how difficult they are to actually facilitate. So once we started to talk about that, we started talking to the law department here, we realized it was not going to be simple. But from my conversations with other departments, other agencies, other cities, the, the other thing I've gleaned is that the onus on us through whether it be education and insurance is where they have put a lot of their resources as well. They have door-to-door campaigns where the focus is on educating the folks in the neighborhoods, right, especially the vulnerable neighborhoods, as to the importance of the insurance and the insurance coverage. And I think we need to shift the way we've thought about the process. While these other processes are in place, Counselor, I think our focus needs to be in the communities that we serve. I think the most important work we can do is door-to-door community work, just educating people on the simple basics of stuff like homeowners' insurance, renters' insurance, to help facilitate some of these issues short-term while we work on our long-term solutions. So from my conversations to a person, it has been about, here's what you do in the meantime. While you're working in the background of these other things, make sure that you are disseminating as much information about insurance as possible. And I, and I think that, that's going to need, my office's focus, along with our disaster resource network, is about getting out Saturdays, handing out pamphlets, is antiquated as it seems, right? That's the approach that works. Old flyer, giving out flyers about insurance in different languages. I think that's grassroots, and that's how we get it done in the short term.
Somebody who cut their teeth on grassroots campaigns, I 100% agree with you and think that they are the most effective way to get the word out about, about anything. And I do appreciate that approach of being more proactive than reactive, right? We can anticipate a disaster as much as we want when it happens. Of course, we have to be there to support folks, but planning for it and preparing for it and making sure that people have everything that they need beforehand would help curb some of the chaos that we had heard from, from folks here. Okay, I think there is obviously more questions that I have based on this conversation than I do have answers. This is going to be a long-term initiative that I hope to push forward. I still think that there is validity in trying to develop something, and what that looks like, we don't know. It's the unknown, it's the question mark. Developing something that falls within state law that we could set up, that could help the city and ultimately help the residents when an emergency happens or a fire happens because folks are not, namely homeowners and landlords, they're not stepping up in the way that they should. And that's really where I wanted to zero in the conversation. How do we help those folks who are sleeping on the floor of their restaurants that they work in and have really fallen through the cracks in that way? I think for follow-up from me, I would love to have more conversations with you all individually and trying to develop something, I think that we can look to in terms of a piece of legislation or an ordinance. I certainly would like to talk to you more, Danielle, about the state aspect of it that you were discussing, where landlords are required to give notice within 15 days. 15 days seems like an eternity, I think, after some of this, how can we change that? $750 is not anything in the context of today and today's cost of living. So a bunch of different concurrent efforts that we can continue to discuss, but I just want to thank you for your time and your energy in just being here today. It means a lot, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Child behind us?
Yes.
She was passed out a window at a fire. Am I correct, this Sophie?
Yes.
This Sophie from the fire in High Park? So she was a one-year-old infant, and she, the firefighter that lived in the same building enticed her mother to drop her out the window, and she wouldn't be here today if that didn't pick, and I'm just amazed by that. What a blessing that this child is running around here today. That there was a very intense fire, I was there after it was out, it was very intense, and this baby is here because her mother dropped her out the window into the arms of a firefighter, and it's just a, it's a beautiful thing to see. Sophie? You're not in trouble, hello?
Thank you for bringing that up, and it's good to have, we're going to have public testimony right next. And just shout out to the firefighters too, for all the work that they do every single day.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, again, just very thankful for all the work that you all do, and we are, but we're not going to transition over to public testimony. We will now move forward public testimony. When your name is called, please come down to one of the two podiums and state your name, your neighborhood or organization affiliation. Please speak into the microphone and please keep your comments to about two minutes. And I have the list here. We have, on the loose, Luzmar Centeno from Wellington Hill Street. Do you want, Counselor, to read it or do you want to testify?
I am going to say something, and then you can read.
Okay.
Good afternoon, my name is Luzmar. This is a very emotional moment for me. I am here for my family, for all the fire victims that can speak and make a voice. I am here to support the rental insurance. My apologies if my testimonies reveal too much information, but it's true and from my pain. I am responsible for every single sentence that is written in the paper, and you are welcome to ask me for any proof or any witness, I have it all. This is not about the money, this is about the unnecessary pain when a system does not work correctly. And I am tired of knocking doors, and I am grateful for this hearing, I am grateful for your time, I am grateful for all the community. And lastly, I would like to ask the council to please, please follow up with the big things and no make just papers, just reports, talk to us. Is many of us hiding in, in pain? Thank you.
Thank you, Luzmar. I know that my colleague is going to read a bit of your testimony.
Sure. Thank you. And this is a direct personal request that was made by Luzmar, so I will honor that request. And this, and if it's okay, because this is a pretty long letter, I will enter it into the record and just generalize what you have said. Thank you. Good morning, members of the council, Madam City Council President Louie Jean and staff of the city council, representative from our emergency departments, dedicated community activist, Burkaz Diaz, and my fellow Bostonian families. My name is Luzmar Centeno, and this is my daughter, Sofia Ucedo Mendez Centeno, who is four years old. We currently live in Matapan. I stand before you today not just as a fire survivor, but a testament to the urgent need for a radical shift in how our city supports its residents in the devastating aftermath of a fire, particularly concerning the administration of emergency shelter and housing funds. On July 17th, 2021, at 7:00 a.m. on Sunday, my family and I were narrowly, narrowly escaped a terrifying fire at 22R Norton Street in High Park. We almost lost our lives. I am here today for my mental well-being and to set a good example for my three beautiful children, Anderson, Fernanda, and Sofia, whom I had to pass from a second-floor window into the arms of our guardian angel, our neighbor and retired firefighter, firefighter Daniel Loring. Thank you. All God's grace and prayers from my mom and Catholic, and Catholic group in Rosendale saved us, the immediate period that followed revealed a broken system from the city, one that failed us repeatedly when we were at our most vulnerable. Today is a difficult day, difficult week, and a sad month for my family. We still endure ongoing health issues, panic attacks, various other health issues. These are not just good ideas in how to do your job, this is my personal opinion and story based on my experience and my family's hardship. One thing that she highlights is inaccessible and impersonal application processes, and her solution-
her solution is to implement a compassionate, trauma-informed intake process, leveraging existing city databases, fire department reports, and police records to verify victim status. The second issue was breakdown in communication and coordination between official and partner agencies with a solution to establish clear mandatory communication protocols and regular data sharing between city departments. The third was a lack of timely and comprehensive support with a solution to extend initial temporary shelter durations based on individual family needs with clear, consistent communication about extensions and next steps, and managed by trained social workers capable of solving immediate challenges. The fourth, insufficient landlord accountability and tenant protection. Implement strict regulations and enforcement mechanisms to hold landlords accountable for fire safety and tenant support. Neglect of children's need and lack of school system coordination with a solution to establish a direct mandatory communication channel between emergency responders and Boston public schools, as well as their social workers and relevant authorities, just to inform the adults about students affected by their fires and to check in on their trauma and loss. And then last, she mentions that the broken system leaves families like mine to navigate an impossible maze during their darkest hours. The creation of a standardized process and a dedicated fire victim fund is crucial. It has to be designed with these families in mind, based on their experiences, and ensuring immediate access to shelter, housing, stability, food, empathetic guidance through recovery, and long-term solutions. And she thanks everyone for their time and commitment to making this fund truly possible for Bostonians and not just words, but actually hoping for all of us to take action.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Luz Mar. Do we have any virtual? No? Well, just thank you so much, Luz Mar, for that public test, for that testimony. Okay. We're moving on now to closing remarks. I will allow my counsel colleague to provide some closing remarks.
Thank you, Counselor Preppin. I really don't have anything that's, that hasn't already been said. I do just want to highlight that I've also received another letter from an East Boston resident, Claudia, who lives at Condor Street, who dives into the issues of mass law requiring landlords to provide short-term emergency housing mandated at $700 per household. This is simply not enough. The current system relies too far on community-based fundraising and charity to meet residents' most basic needs after these disasters. Establishing a dedicated victims' fund would ensure that no family in Boston is left without shelter, food, or essential resources in the aftermath of a desire. It would provide a standardized, equitable process for helping residents rebuild and reduce the burden on already stretched community departments and organizations. So I think that sums up exactly what I am hoping to accomplish here, and just want to thank you all so much for your time and the work that you do every single day. And I want to thank you, the chair, for holding this hearing. Thanks, everyone.
Of course. To the panelists, thank you so much for today's testimony. To the previous panel, thank you so much as well. To the, to the residents that are in the room, thank you for being here and sharing your story. To Counselor Paletta Zapata, Counselor Worrell, and Ruthie Louie Jean, thank you for sponsoring and co-sponsoring this very important hearing. This is a very important topic in our city. There's a lot of people that are impacted by fires every single day. Just yesterday, I was helping out a community leader in Matapan who's a coach with Matapan Patriots, lost his home recently because of a fire. And it's just one of those topics that we never get right because it's sometimes due to Mother Nature. And we, as people, need to come up with solutions to make it as easy as possible for that transition. But I think that when we come together, we put our ideas with the community, the residents, and our knowledge here at City Hall, I think we could truly bring some good solutions to the table. So I'm just grateful to be part of the conversation. But with that, I would like to say that this hearing on docket number 0314 is adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.